There's only thirteen campsites, but there's dry camping.
I now call the September 6th, 2016 Regular Council Meeting to order. Would council members please denote your presence by pressing your yes switch? The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, excuse the absence of Councilman Miller.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Kathy, seconded by Councilman Powell. Please cast your vote.
Mr. Mayor, perhaps we could explain to people where Councilman Miller is?
I got a call from Councilman Miller and he is driving back from his honeymoon and may not actually make it in time. And I thought, and I told him this over the phone, I said, you know, finding a life partner may be a little more important than one city council meeting. Sorry for saying so, so directly, but yeah, so we're, we're very forgiving of that effort. Okay. Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve, by minute action, the minutes of the August 16th, 2016 Regular Council Meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on August 28th, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Corrections? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Okay. Chair would entertain a motion to approve, by minute action, the September 6th, 2016 Bills and Claims as audited by City Manager McDonald.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Hiley. Any abstentions?
Your Honor?
Yes.
Need to abstain from anything regarding the Neutrona County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you. Any other extensions? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With the abstention noted by Councilman, or by Councilman Johnson noted, motion passes.
Okay. The good news in our program this evening. Continuous staff training is relevant in all areas of city operations. This was never more evident than one morning in April at the Casper Events, at the Casper Family Aquatics Center. It was a fairly typical weekday morning, several seniors were walking, walking, water walking. There were people lap swimming and there was a physical education class from Neutrona County High School finishing up. What wasn't typical was that an adult patron in the lap pool went into full cardiac arrest. The two lifeguards on duty, Mariah Spearman and Edwin Lures, along with the aquatics coordinator, reacted according to an established and practiced protocols and enacted the emergency action plan. Because the aquatics staff formally trains and practices emergency action plans on a monthly basis and reviews and practices procedures continually, staff on duty were able to respond with purpose, immediacy, and consistency and responded as expected. Equipment such as AED units are kept stocked and up to date. Staff recognized the emergency and were able to restore life for the individual. One of the patrons who observed the event and staff's response said, "That was amazing to witness. After seeing your guards in action, I want to be at the aquatics center if anything ever happens to me." This patron's life was saved as a result of the trained responses of staff. Because of these actions, the Wyoming Association of Risk Management... Because of these actions, the Wyoming Association of Risk Management honored the Casper City with its quarterly award. The intent of the award program, called Risk Wins, is to recognize loss control efforts implemented by WARM's member organizations. This award was given the second quarter of 2016 for the constant training and drills in emergency response that prepared these lifeguards for the lifesaving response that they were able to execute so perfectly. Casper City Council and I personally am very grateful that this situation was handled so well that we would like these two staff members to come forward to be recognized. Do we have lifeguards Mariah Spearman and Edwin's, Edwin Lures here? Please come forward. Okay, I'm gonna guess who you are by your first name? And try not to hand you the wrong certificates. Okay. Certificate of Red Recognition in Excellence and a Lifesaving Response to Edwin Lures. And Certificate of Recognition Excellence, Excellence in Lifesaving Response, Mariah Spearman. And just a side note. There was another recipient of the award and she didn't want to be mentioned because she was just doing her job. That's her job, to have an adequately trained staff, so there is one more person recognized in humility. Council will now address the main business portion of the meeting. Council carries out business by three types of action, by ordinance, resolution, and minute action. Ordinances require three readings and votes, whereas the other items are passed by one. Ordinances create or modify local law, whereas resolutions and minute action items provide for council to carry out its business. These various actions may have different publication and public hearing requirements. Items may be considered by consent or not consent. Consent items are typically routine and will not be discussed by council. Items not listed as consent will be discussed by council. There is a process for the public as well as council to remove a title from consent. Council will now consider establishing the schedule of future public hearings which are held for the purpose of obtaining public input. Public hearings are held for items such as annexations, liquor licenses, passing of the budget, zone changes. Public hearings are also required for public notice via publication in the newspaper. The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, establish the public hearing dates just read. Did I skip a page?
I'll read the titles.
Okay. Please read the titles.
Establish September 20th, 2016 as the public hearing date for consideration of the following three items. Zone change of lots five and six Standard Oil Company subdivision located at 911 C Y Avenue and 1535 South Poplar Street from R2 one-unit residential to C2 general business. Consideration of fiscal year 2015-2016 Community Development Block Grant Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. Consideration of fiscal year 2017 Budget Adjustments Related to the Casper Event Center. Establishing October 4th, 2016 as the public hearing date for consideration of the following three items. Sale of city-owned real property to the state of Wyoming. Transfer of ownership for retail liquor license number 35 City of Casper doing business as Casper Event Center located at 1 Events Drive. And transfer of ownership of the Achilles SG 140 inflatable boat with Mercury motor and trailer and six sets of dive gear to the Neutrona County Sheriff's Office.
Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, establish the public hearing dates just read.
So moved.
I'm, I'm picking Vice Mayor Kathy as moved and Hopkins as seconded. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now hold previously scheduled public hearings for the purposes of obtaining public input. Public hearings are held for items such as annexations, liquor license transactions, passage of the budget, and zone changes. The seated attorney will present applicable exhibits on the issue and the city manager will give council a report. Members of the audience will then be asked to speak either in favor or against the issue and the council will discuss the issue and act upon it if necessary. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the vacation replat and rezoning to create Wolf Creek 8 Edition. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor, I have two exhibits. Exhibit number one corresponds from Liz Becker to V H McDonald, that document being dated August 24th, 2016. And exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated August 16th, 2016.
City Manager McDonald, please give your reports.
Your Honor, Mesa Development Incorporated has applied for vacation and replat of 18.107 acres, more or less, to create the Wolf Creek 8 Edition and changed the zoning from planned unit development, C2 general businesses, and office business to R2 one-unit residential. In 2014, this area was replatted and, and zone changes made, but that, that plat expired and a new application's been submitted to develop this property in two areas. The first area is the southeast corner that's on the map, and I haven't got the map up, excuse me. And the second one will be the rest of the property or what they refer to as Track B. The proposed R2 one-unit residential zoning of Wolf Creek 8 Edition is consistent with the long-range plan for the development of this area. Properties surrounding the subject property are Zone R1 Residential Estate on the south, ED Educational District to the west, C2 Business District, and R4 High Density Residential to the north, and C2 General Business to the east. Existing land uses in the surrounding area include single-family residence, a school, an assisted living center, and a family, multifamily residential development. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of this vacation replat and zoning creating the Wolf Creek 8 Edition after a public hearing on July 21st, 2016. There were no public comments received, however, the Planning and Zoning Condition attached two conditions for their approval of this app, of these applications. And those two conditions are, number one, vehicular access to the lots with frontage on Aspen Place shall be prohibited off of, off Aspen Place and shall only be permitted on interior streets through Wolf Creek 8. And number two, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for any structure in Wolf Creek 8, the west side of Aspen Place shall be completed to city standards as a collector street, including but not limited to asphalt, curb, gutter, detached sidewalks, and street lighting.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issues involving Wolf Creek 8 to pre, please approach the lectern. Welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm Sean Gustafson with ECS Engineers representing Mesa Development here this evening. ECS Engineers located at 111 West Second Street, Suite 600. Yeah, as, as the city manager stated, this, this plat, and it's essentially the same plat, was approved in 2014 and it expired. It went a year without signature while there were some internal, some internal business dealings that didn't get taken care of. And so we're, we're back with what we feel is an improved plat. The first, the first piece of this Wolf Creek number eight is the piece that they want to start with to make the entrance to the subdivision to, you know, to have it, I guess, a little bit more visible than it would be, previously they were gonna start with the cul-de-sac that would now become in the Wolf Creek 9 Edition that would be in the north and west corner along the assisted living area, but that's kinda hidden, so. And the, and the current market really is favorable to these types of homes. The only other thing I'd really like to state here is that the Wolf Creek 9 plat will be in front of you, which will be the rest of this area. It'll include the detention pond that is in a piece that is to be annexed from the county. You can see it downward, a little triangular corner is in this development, goes there and on up next to the assisted living center. So that will be, the detention will be built and annexed with that phase. One of the things in that phase, we've got the plat designed, we're going through some of the final things on it right now. But one of the things is, is previously there was an offset intersection in this plat and that offset intersection has been corrected so that now we have a regular four-way intersection in this plat. So I, I guess with that, I would love to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Gustafson? Yeah.
Thank you, I'm glad you're here this evening. When I was looking at this, this drawing and the accompanying one in our packet, I noticed that the northern extension of what is Timber Wolf Court, which is the first court in the, on the east side of the subdivision, when you, the northern extension of that road is, is hindered by the Mountain Plaza number five edition, which is that large square that's not in, included in the sec, the B. How is that, how is that street going to terminate when you don't have the Mountain Plaza five addition and can't plan for it and there's no space for a cul-de-sac with the lot number one and lot number two?
The, that, that square area in the north and east corner, if you will, of Aspen Place and I guess at the intersection, that would be the south and west corner of Aspen and Talon will be part of that Wolf Creek nine plat and will also be a single-family residential.
So even though it's part of a different subdivision right now, Mountain Plaza, it will be incorporated into the nine, the Wolf Creek?
That is correct. This plat was a little bit simpler, we did not include, include that part of it in this plat, will include that into the next plat. It also includes annexation, that's a much longer process, so.
Cause it's quite an anomalous-looking.
Yeah, it looks funny right now. You kinda have to see the whole thing as a whole. I wish I'd brought a big map of the whole thing tonight, but it, it will be replatted and single-family residential and then all of the, the same, the same type of deal, all the stuff that's a long. Talon will not have any access to Talon, that will be accessed off internal streets, or Timber Wolf Drive. Okay. Thank you.
Good. More questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the issues involving Wolf Creek 8, please approach the lectern? Okay. Is there anyone at this time who wishes to speak in opposition to the issues involving Wolf Creek 8? Please approach the lectern. Wishing to speak in opposition? Alright. There being no others to speak for or against the issues involving Wolf Creek 8, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance approving a replat, subdivision agreement, and zone change for the proposed Wolf Creek 8 Edition in the city of Casper, Wyoming.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Powell, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Discussion? Yes.
I would like to thank the developers for realigning that street which brings it all back in. I think I was one of the people that was complaining about that a little bit the last time, so we thank you.
Yes.
I don't think it was a little bit, Councilman Kathy, as I recall. But I would also like to compliment Mesa for moving forward in our current environment and showing faith in our community. This is also an example of infill where we're seeing some properties that are essentially surrounded by other developed areas that is now, that is now being put to constructive use and so this is a good thing.
Any more comments, questions? I would like to echo those sentiments and this is very much in part of what Vice Mayor Kathy has been talking about for his entire four years on council is planned development and little details like having a thoroughfare essentially built in because it was planned so that you're not accessing your neighborhood from Talon. You gotta go into quieter streets and come around. This is, this is smart planning, so kudos to the developer. Okay. Any amendments, questions? Do we just vote now? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing for consideration of the Central Wyoming Rescue Mission Edition. City Attorney Lubin, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor, I have two exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one corresponds from Liz Becker to V H McDonald dated August 24th, 2016. And exhibit number two, that again being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune, that document dated August 16th, 2016.
Thank you. City Manager McDonald, your report.
Your Honor, applications have been received from the Central Wyoming Rescue Mission for vacation and replat of nine points, or .964 acres, more or less, comprising lots K through T, block 59 of the Edding subdivision, to be consolidated into one single property lot to be known as the Central Wyoming Rescue Mission. And change for the lots involved in the replat, lots Q through T from M1 Limited Industrial to C3 Central Business. Partial surrounding the property involved in the replat and rezone are Zone C3 Central Business to the north and south, M1 Limited Industrial and C3 Central Business to the west, M1 Limited Industrial and C2 General Business to the east. The future plans for this property is for the construction of the new Central Wyoming Rescue Mission facility. Within the last 10 to 11 years, the city has reviewed and approved approximately 13 similar rezone requests in the area surrounding the subject property. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of vacation replat and zoning creating the Central Wyoming Rescue Mission Edition after a public hearing on July 21st, 2016. There were no public comments received by the Planning and Zoning Commission at that hearing.
Thank you. At this time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issues involving Central Wyoming Rescue Mission Edition to please approach the lectern. Those to speak in favor.
Evening, Mr. Mayor and Council, Brad Hopkins, Executive Director at Central Wyoming Rescue Mission on 230 North Park. Just wanna thank you and Mr. Manager for your work and Ms. Becker on the Development Department. This is a meeting, a critical need in our community, a safety net that Central Wyoming Rescue Mission provides for those that are homeless and impoverished, incurring various difficulties and we're in a struggling Wyoming economy and seeing a number of folks that are struggling right now. 4% increase in the number of women and 9% increase in the number of meals that we're serving just to those that aren't necessarily homeless but are trying to preserve a, their current situation, saving food by coming to eat at the Rescue Mission. And surprised to me is the number of veterans that are coming to us right now as well. We're seeing about a 25% increase there, so naturally I speak very highly in favor of this project. Little did I know we were sitting on, it seemed like, about 100 lots right in the city and to build across it, we have to go through a process with you to, to join those. I was kidding, of course. Less than 10, but appreciate your attention to this. Any questions, happy to speak to you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hopkins?
Mr. Hopkins, could you give us a status report on fundraising for the building of the facility? And could you also tell us when this is built, how it's going to increase the capacity of the Rescue Mission?
Yes, great question, Councilman Powell. We're actively working on our fundraising process right now. Of course, before that has been a very extensive planning process. We have a unique opportunity in the world of rescue missions to build a completely new building. Those of you that know the history of our current building, we are very good at co-opting and retrofitting and, if you will, redeeming buildings for purposes that benefit the community. But that being said, it's done its service, it's worn out its time, and we need to expand. We have this extensive planning process for building we believe is gonna last at least 100 years and certainly serve the next generation of need in the community. We have a great team that's working on our fundraising efforts. Volunteers from the community co-chaired by Mrs. Vicki Orcott and Mr. Bryce True and so we're getting some traction in headway there. As you know, it's not an overnight process, but best-case scenario, God willing, we, we would look to break ground in the spring of next year.
Very good. Any more questions or comments?
Do you anticipate a capacity when you're done?
Anticipated capacity, there's a little bit of an accordion flex to that, but immediately we're looking at 150 individuals that we'll be able to accommodate, flexing up to 180. A critical need we're experiencing right now, as you know, with our partnership with, with you over at the Life Steps Campus and Community Action Partnership, our temporary cold weather shelter for women. That's our particular need for women and single mom families, so this is a great temporary solution. It's not an ideal long-term solution. You know, sleeping on a cot in the middle of a gymnasium is maybe not my top choice. I don't think it would be any of ours for an overnight, but we need, need to grow our capacity for women and single mom families.
Any more questions, comments? Any more questions, comments? I would like to just interject a snarky comment. I personally find it symbolically comforting that the Central Wyoming Rescue Mission is replacing a brothel from Casper's past. I think that's good symbolism. Anyway. Any other questions? Thank you.
Not too snarky.
Yeah. Anyone else to speak in favor?
Dennis Steensland, 533 South Washington. I just hit on a question. Why is it Zone C3 rather than multiple family dwellings? Which I don't know what that would be, C2, R2? Why is it C3?
I think Craig is approaching to answer your question.
Mr. Mayor, the reason C3 is being utilized in this area is because of the comprehensive plan. Says that area should be C3. There's a lot of C3 down there now. A portion of this property is already C3, and you can do multifamily or rescue shelters under C3, so.
So C3 central business zoning is okay with?
It is. It's really a mixed-use zoning classification, and it's what the long-range plan says should be in this area.
So it allows for a high density?
It does.
Okay. Yes?
Just to supplement that, C3 has about 53 approved uses, and one of them, number 26, is homes for the homeless and long-term shelters.
Nice.
We learned something tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishes to speak in favor?
Good evening again. Sean Gustafson, CS Engineers, 111 West Second Street, Suite 600. We're the author of the plat and the zone change and all that, and I basically want to say that I do support this, and I'm happy to answer any technical questions that you may have on this plat or on zone change.
Okay. Any technical questions for Mr. Gustafson? He prepared the plat. Okay.
That was easy.
I just thought of one. You can nod. Does this plat include B Street?
No.
All right.
The B Street remains the same. The plat is just internal to the block.
Okay. Well, I just wanted to note for the public that B Street is like 100 yards long, but it's a street. Anyway. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the issues around Central Wyoming Rescue Mission addition? Please approach the lectern. Okay? At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issues involving Central Wyoming Rescue Mission addition to please approach the lectern. Those to speak in opposition. All right. There being no others to speak for or against the issues involving the Central Wyoming Rescue Mission addition, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance approving a replat subdivision agreement and zone change for the proposed Central Wyoming Rescue Mission addition in the city of Casper, Wyoming.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance just read.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Hiley, seconded by Councilman Humphrey. Discussion. Go ahead.
The Central Wyoming Rescue Mission does provide an essential safety net for those people in our community that need it. And one of the ways in which the city can support the Rescue Mission and its mission is to make sure that when plans come forward to expand and improve the capacity of the facilities like the Rescue Mission, that we make sure that we have a friendly environment to move those plans forward. So I'm very much in favor of approving the zone change to help the Rescue Mission in its job of providing a safety net for the people of Casper.
Here, here. Any more questions, comments? All right. Any amendments? Okay. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number 21 for 666 Restaurant located at 260 South Center Street. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. I have four exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one corresponds from Tracy L. Belser to V.H. McDonald dated August 18th, 2016. Exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated August 18th, 2016. Exhibit number three, that being the affidavit of website publication as published on the city of Casper website, that document dated August 18th, 2016. And exhibit number four, that being the actual liquor license application, which was filed with the city on July 19th, 2016.
Thank you. City Manager McDonald, your report, please.
Your Honor, an application has been received for a liquor license at 260 South Center Street. This is the location of, I believe it was the House of Sushi, was previously there, by 666 Restaurant Incorporated. This is a restaurant license, subject to the food sale requirement of 60% of their sales annually must be food. And the application's been reviewed by staff and the state and is in order, and the publications, as mentioned by the city attorney, have been made.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number 21 to please approach the lectern. Those to speak in favor. Okay. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number 21 to please approach the lectern. To speak in opposition. Okay. There being no one to speak either for or against the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number 21, I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number 21.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Powell. We're ready to vote? Okay. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the issuance of Retail Liquor License Number 37 for Charger Holding LLC, doing business as Yellowstone Garage, located at 355 West Yellowstone. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. I have four exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one, that being corresponds from Tracy Belser to V.H. McDonald dated September 6th, 2016. Exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of the publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated September 6th of 2016. Exhibit number three, that document being the affidavit of website publication as published on the city of Casper website, being dated August 23rd, 2016. And exhibit number four, that being the actual liquor license application, which was filed with the city on July 27th, 2016.
Thank you. City Manager McDonald, your report, please.
Your Honor, as council's aware, the city council sought proposals for person interested in being granted a new liquor license, which became available to the community due to an increase in population. Six applications, six proposals for that license were presented to the city council at work session held July 16th of this year. From those presentations, the city council scored Charger Holding LLC, doing business as Yellowstone Garage, located at 355 West Yellowstone, as the preferred proposed use of the license. And this is a full retail license, number 37. Accordingly, Charger Holdings has submitted an application for the license. If awarded, the license will be located at 355 West Yellowstone, and in accordance with council's original desire, it will be restricted as to location. It can be transferred to owners, but it won't, it's not, it will be restricted to me not be transferred to a separate location other than this address. The appropriate staff and agency reviews have been conducted, as well as required publications and web publications.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issuance of Retail Liquor License Number 37 to please approach the lectern. Those to speak in favor. Welcome.
I'm John Huff. Resided at 24 West Yellowstone in Casper. And I'm here to advocate for myself, so. We're working hard on putting all this together, and I hope we can impress everybody, but other than deep into construction planning and everything, we're well on our way pending the outcome of tonight's meeting.
Okay. Questions or comments for John Huff?
Certainly like to thank you, John. We have been working at OYD for a lot of years together, and this is another crowning achievement for OYD. Thanks for doing it.
Thank you.
Any others? Certainly.
When's opening night?
We want to do, we want to, we have some events scheduled in October. We would really like to get open for that, and we're crowding it to make that happen, but that's the plan. We'd like to be able to not have to hire someone to come in to serve those, so. That's the plan, and you know how plans are.
Okay. Any others? All right. Just to note, this is an issuance, but you still have to renew in early spring. What is it, March, May, February?
Locations are due January, I believe, with a public hearing in February for renewal in April.
Okay. So.
Will I get a reminder for that?
Sure.
All right.
Although I probably shouldn't commit the city to keep everyone apprised of their license standing. Yes, you will get a reminder. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the issuance of Liquor License Number 37? Okay. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issuance of Retail Liquor License Number 37 to please approach the lectern. Those who wish to speak in opposition. Welcome, Mr. Pad.
Been a while. Paul Pad, 2781 Cherokee. I'm not really speaking in opposition, but I have a question more than anything. You're putting the restriction on there that this is going to not be allowed to be transferred to any other address? Does that understand that? Okay. And that restriction, what would it take to remove that should something happen to that location? That's my...
Well, the idea of placing a restriction on it is, was especially prescient because this was a first-issued license. It goes for 1,500 bucks and eventually could be potentially worth a couple hundred thousand, so.
I understand that part of it, but the thing is, is there's, is this going to be forever bound to that particular address? I don't think so.
Every time it's transferred, every time it's renewed, conditions could change.
Then why even put the restriction on it? I guess is my question. Why even bother putting that on there if there's really, it's not really a binding situation? I would just assume, I guess my suggestion, I don't know, offer my two cents for what it is, is just to not even have that restriction on there myself, because I mean, it's basically meaningless.
Well, it does prevent someone to, from getting a $1,500 license and selling it for a quarter million within a month. I mean, you actually have to sell the business.
Does this council not review the transfers and the relocation of the license anyways?
We have, and council has discussed the, and probably scheduled for a work session, what council really needs to do is develop policy for liquor licenses and their transfers.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is that, you know, if somebody, if he comes in here and transfers, he wants to sell it, he wants to move it or anything like that, he's going to have to come before the council anyways.
Right. Right.
So, again, it seems redundant or meaningless to even put that restriction on there, but I'll leave it go to you guys. I guess I would make the request that you would take that off of there, so. Anyway. That's it. Thanks.
Duly noted. Questions? Mr. Pad?
One comment I would make is that basically that is stating from the very beginning that we do not anticipate and we do not expect this license to be sold to move to someplace else, and that the owner of that license that is getting it knows that going in, not later on if he were to try to sell it. So that's the reason it's there. So putting out the rules at the beginning of the process, not partway through, because right now it's been policy and it's been expected that if there are no restrictions on the license, then it comes up time to sell it or trade it, there will be no restrictions, and that's not the time to put restrictions on the license.
Well, you just deny the, you just deny the transfer if that's what you want to do. That's kind of like saying, okay, we're going to have four downs to play football here. You get close to goal line, well, what the heck, we'll just give you another down. We'll have to talk about it at the time, but anyways. I think it's, my opinion, it's not necessary.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition to the issuance of Liquor License Number 37? Please approach the lectern. Speaking in opposition. All right. There being no one else to speak either in for or against the issue, issuance of Retail Liquor License Number 37, I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the issuance of Retail Liquor License Number 37, with this license being issued and restricted for its active use only at 355 West Yellowstone in Casper, Wyoming, and shall not be eligible for transfer to any other location with this restriction being stated upon the license.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Vice Mayor Kathy. Did we model up this process sufficiently? I guess is my question. All right. Any amendments? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I strongly support tying it to a location. I think it creates an expectation, as the vice mayor states, but it, I think, sends a message that we're unhappy with how this process works, where people basically treat the license as a greatly inflated piece of property to be used almost like a bond or something that can be sold. And that's not the intent of a liquor license, and we do have liquor licenses that are not in operation or that are treated essentially almost like a retirement policy for folks that have them. And I think, I think the reason for the discussion that we'll have in a few short weeks is to discuss how we should handle this process, what kinds of restrictions should be put in place. But obviously, a license that is restricted to a location has much less value as a, as an asset that can be sold to any other party, and there's a much higher likelihood that the restaurant will stay open at that location. So I do support that stipulation.
Councilman Hopkins?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too support it, and I think it's, it's in the long run, a better use of our policies in the city to use some of these to help develop in different areas. We had six good folks come in... We had six good folks come in and want to do something, and we elected to give it to one organization because we had one. But it points out an even bigger problem in the liquor laws in the state of Wyoming. And that's where it needs to go. Something needs to be done different in the legislature.
Here, here. Any more? Okay. Any amendments? Okay. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item eight A one, a resolution authorizing a consent agreement for real property inspections with the state of Wyoming. Item eight A two, a resolution authorizing amendment number one to the contract for professional services with C H two M Hill Engineers, Inc. for the Sam H Hobbs wastewater treatment plant preliminary facilities plan project. Item eight A three, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Atlantic Electric, Inc. for the luminaire services project. Item eight A four, a resolution authorizing change order number one to the agreement with Low &amp; Bro for a time extension for the Casper Event Center lighting project. Item eight A five, a resolution authorizing a contract for professional services with H D R Engineering, Inc. for ongoing studies, tasks, and activities regarding water rights and water supply activities. Item eight A eight, pardon me, six, a resolution authorizing a right-of-way easement with Kevin Calley's for drainage channel and culvert upsizing for the Lower East Dale Creek channel improvements. Item eight A seven, a resolution authorizing change order number one with G W Mechanical, Inc. for the Casper Event Center chiller replacement project. Item eight A eight, a resolution authorizing change order number one to the agreement with Installation and Service Company, Inc. for the Recreation Center parking lot improvements project. Item eight A nine, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Seventy-One Construction, Inc. for the Mike Cedar Pool parking lot project. Item eight A ten, a resolution authorizing change order number one with Ace Sand Blasting and Coating, Inc. for a price increase as part of the prelimi- pardon me, primary clarifier number one recoding project. Item eight A eleven, a resolution authorizing the termination of a contract for professional services with Wolfgang of Wyoming LLC.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Humphrey, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Any abstentions or nay votes? Very well, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now consider minute action items. These are routine business items that do not require a resolution. Please read the consent minute action title.
Approving a one-year extension for retail liquor license number eight for Z Financial Administration and Management, Inc. located at eleven twenty-one Wilkins Circle.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda item just read.
We'll move.
Second. Moved by Councilman, Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With Councilmen Haley and Humphrey voting nay, motion passes.
Now is the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. We ask that you please state your name and address. Welcome, Mr. Pad.
Paul Pad, twenty-seven eighty-one Cherokee. I'm here for you to see if this council can look into some issues we've had with water bills in this past couple of months in this city. You know, if you have one or two people that have an issue with a water bill, especially in the summer, we get the same standardized response from the city when we call and, and find out, you know, oh, wow, you must have been watering more, or you, or you have a leak, or we'll come out and check the meter. I mean, it's the same standard canned responses. It, it's come to my attention, and I've seen around where I'll, it seems to be a, an abundance of people who have had the, had, had the issue of an extremely, extremely large increase in their water bill, especially in July. Now, I know everybody says you're gonna water, but I can sit here and I, I can look at, I have a, I have three water bills sitting in front of me right here. One didn't change a bit, one tripled, and I can tell you, I know that one doesn't water because I have the water unhooked to the outside faucets. And another one went up with a water usage almost nine hundred percent. It went from two thousand gallons to twenty-three thousand gallons usage according to the read. Then the very next month went right back down. That's a, it's an amazing leak that fixes itself. And I can tell you, the resident of that house wasn't even there for one of the weeks. And that's another house that does not water, does not have a garden, there's not an outside faucet that neighbors could have tapped onto to steal the water or whatever. They put a new meter in this house, said, well, we'll check it, we'll take it back and check it, and if there's a problem with the meter, then we'll credit you back or something like this. Notified the owner that there was nothing, they couldn't find anything wrong with the meter. So there, there's something, and, and I don't know what it is, I would hate to say there's something nefarious going on, but it, it certainly, there's certainly a problem when you have fifty, sixty, a hundred, or however many, I don't know how many in this town, that have the, the giant increase when their sprinkler systems are on the same scheduled timing, and, and there's not really an additional usage of water, not enough to explain tripling, quadrupling, and even more of a, of a water bill. The one in particular, one I can set here, and I can go back for the past year plus, and, and I look at the water usage, and I'm going back, it's like, it's like three thousand, one thousand, one thousand, one thousand, one thousand, one thousand, two thousand, two thousand, two thousand, twenty-three thousand, and then right back down. So this is, you know, and if you want to look at the charges on this, just to show you the increases in this, basically, it was, now, I'm talking just the water bill, not the sewage, not the, not the trash pickup, because they're, they're consistent throughout the entire time, well, except for February, we had a little bit of a bump on it there. But, but the water, going back, we're looking at like seven forty-two, seven forty-two, seven forty-two, seven sixty-two, seven sixty-two, nine thirty-nine, nine thirty-nine, nine thirty-nine, eighty-eight seventy-three, seven sixty-two the next month. How does, I, I think the citizens of this town really deserve some sort of an answer other than the canned response, well, you must have used more water watering your lawn, especially when you get to a place like this where there is no lawn to be watered, there is no watering going on. They changed the, they changed the meter, there's, and, and so the next response is, is, well, you must have had, must have a leak. Well, if there was a leak there, and they crawled under the house to change, because the meter's in the crawl space in this house, they crawled under there and there was a leak, I think they probably know it, they'd probably be walking through, you know, twenty thousand gallons worth of water under that house, you know? It, it makes no sense at all. So I'm not exactly sure what you can do about it, but it, it sure seems, it sure seems like it's something that we really need to look into, and, because this absolutely is, it, it makes no sense, you know? And, and I sit here and I talk to people on social media or communicate with them, and, and it, it's, it's horror story after horror story, you know? Where all of a sudden, everybody, especially in July of this year, had an outrageously high bill. Now, I know July is always gonna be a little higher. You can, you can, you can expect some increase because either it's swampy or you're watering or something like this, but the massive amounts of increase, and then just to drop back down and get the sorry excuse that, well, you must have had a leak, you must have a leak, or it, it makes no sense. So I'm here to ask this council, see if they can look in and find out what's going on. I mean, can we, can we check, is there any way checking, see, did we have that massive amount of increase in the, in the water that was being processed at our plant? I mean, I don't know how to look into this any further, but there's something that really needs to be done, because this is, this is just, there's something not right. There's something not right. Like I say, I mean, you can't have this many leaks that just fix themselves. So that's what I had here for today, so.
Pete Myers would like to come up and tell us that there are no systemic problems that can be detected, and I did some research too. So go ahead, Pete.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Councils. Yes, my name is Pete Myers, and I'm the Assistant Support Services Director. And yes, we're aware of the, the number of people who've been concerned about their water bills in the month of July and August. It has been going around on social media, and there was a news story on K two television last week. We've been looking all over for, for something that might be explaining this other than just more water used. Certainly, we did run reports as far as water use this year versus last year. And I can tell you that citywide, yes, it's, it was a drier summer this year. We used more water in July this year than July of last year, but it not excessively so. It's not, it's, it's a three-year high this, this year, but not a five-year high, actually. Four years ago was higher than this, and, and five years ago was higher still. We have been looking around for, if there might be something as far as a systematic billing error or something like that, we certainly haven't found that. You know, we've tried to find various issues as far as trying to track down specific, trying, trying to investigate specific claims that we did find on social media. So far, we haven't found one that, that really pans out as, well, this, this really looks wrong. Mr. Pad did mention our standard responses, and certainly, we do try to give standard responses, and I, and I hope this not, that it's not problematic, but, but yes, I mean, if, if somebody does have an unusually high water bill, we will, we will go out and check it. We have ways to either verify that the meter itself is working, to make sure that the equipment itself is functional. And, and if there is a leak, then yes, we do, we will try to rectify the bill as far as, at least for a certain period of time, in case somebody is paying for water that they really didn't use because it leaked away. And, and these are, these are two standard responses, and, you know, we, we, we do what we can to, to make sure that, that people are getting built properly. The number of calls that we've actually received at the city has not been extraordinary so far yet, as far as the number of, the number of calls for, for excessive water use. It's been a few dozen so far. Now, certainly with social media, and we, we can investigate every one of the claims that we get, and certainly, we, we, and I don't get me wrong, we have gotten other calls, more than just a few dozen calls, but when we start comparing to this year's usage versus last year's usage, that's, that's when things start to seem more in line, and most customers, when, when they're presented with that, that history, they start to understand what's going on. But, but as I say, you know, we will, we will investigate every call that we get where somebody just is convinced that, that either their meter is wrong or that they were misbuilt for some reason.
Is there a way, is there a way to reconcile that if you, if you have a, a water bill that's extraordinarily high because of a leak in the area?
Yes.
And can, can that be found? And, and taking it off the bill? And there's a process for that?
Yes, there's, there's a process for which we will try to estimate what their actual water use was, usually by going back to some, some earlier time before things got all crazy and estimating from there.
And in your investigation, you didn't find any street repairs or broken water mains or anything that could?
Upstream of the meter.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Certainly, a water main break would not, would not be metered water, and nobody would, nobody would be paying for a water main break that's in the middle of their street, but...
Right.
But, but as I say, you know, we have been looking for, for something that, that might be systemic beyond the fact that it's just been, it's been a hot and dry summer.
Right.
And Mr. Pad mentioned that one of his properties was running at about twenty-three thousand gallons. That's, that's about average. Now, certainly, that, that assumes a lawn, and, and most people, you know, do have a lawn, they water a lawn. So I guess I, I can't speak to, to his specific issue as to, to why. Of course, we can look into his as well, or we can look into anyone's. You know, yes, two to three thousand gallons a month would, would be remarkably low. It's, you know, or at least well below average.
Okay. Any more questions or comments for Pete or Paul?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I might, typically, they recommend about an inch of water a week on a lawn.
Right.
And typically, about an inch of water on a square foot of lawn is gonna be about a gallon a week. So if you have four thousand square feet of lawn, you multiply those numbers out, and you're talking twelve to twenty thousand dollars, twenty thousand gallons a month.
Right.
So it, it's, you know, using eight hundred in the month of July, that's, that's not enough water to flush toilets and wash dishes.
Right. I also did a little research, and just so the public knows, the last time the water rates increased, it was this January, and they increased by three point six percent. There is another scheduled increase for January of twenty seventeen of three point five percent. These, these water rates are regionally very low, and they are scheduled for small increment increases to sustain basic water projects and infrastructure. So, you know, it's, it's so that we don't give people a sticker shot. And I did this research because I did not want to be dismissive of the idea by just saying, well, it was really hot this summer, and you gotta water to keep your trees alive when it's ninety degrees for, for weeks straight. So, you know, I will, I will look into it further, but I don't, I don't think there's, I don't think there's a, a real systematic issue, in my humble opinion. Councilman Humphrey.
Thank you. I would just say that if somebody's concerned about their water bill, maybe contact City Hall. We can't research anything when it's just on Facebook, so, you know, give City Hall a call or the Water Department, I'm sure the number's on the water bill. But we can't help if they don't talk to us.
Right. Okay. Yes?
Yes, if I may, that number is two three five eight four zero zero for initiation.
Did you hear that? Two three five eight four zero zero. Okay. Paul, are you done?
I guess unless you have any other questions, I'm just saying.
Thank you.
Yeah, I guess I'm done unless you have any other questions for me, but I'm just saying, you know, it's, it, it's, seems to be a whole lot worse this year than it has been in the past. And I know you're saying it's a drier summer, but when I'm sitting here looking at houses that don't even water, that don't have lawns to water, they don't, don't even have water going to the outside of the house for the neighbors to steal the water like has been suggested in the past, you know, there's, there's something wrong somewhere on it, and, and, you know, I, I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what the answer is. I mean, unless there's some, I guess the only thing that I could come up with, and I don't know, City Engineers, is there any way that, I guess I would ask them, is there any way, maybe Pete would know this, that, you know, if, if, could the water surge in and out through your meter somehow if there's an excess of flow, or is there a back check on that, on that meter? I mean, can it like drain out because of a water usage somewhere and then push back in and just keep racking up on it? I don't know. I mean, I'm trying to rack my brain coming up with some kind of an explanation, and nothing makes any sense, not to me. But, you know, there, there's gotta be some, you know, rational or irrational explanation. You don't sit there and go from, you know, two thousand, two thousand, one thousand, two thousand, and then go to twenty-three thousand gallons, and then right back down to two thousand gallons. You know, you know, leaks like that don't go undetected, and then they don't fix themselves. So anyways, thank you.
Anyone else wish to address council? Please approach the lectern.
Dennis Steensland, five thirty-three South Washington. I've had the same problem as Mr. Pad paid. Mine doubled. I did talk to the city, they're always very nice, they explain it to you. I'm still studying it to figure out what it is, but same situation, one house, nobody lives in, water's very little, and just enough to keep the city off your back for weeds or whatever. But anyway, personal house doubled, so I'll study that one out further. That's not what I come to talk about. Extension retail liquor license number eight, is that like a one-year extension after a two-year park?
Yes. Short answer.
Okay, so that's getting, that's pretty much common. Okay, so that's pretty much common procedure.
When we alluded to the fact that we're going to look into this issue and maybe come up with a policy, then this is the exact issue that will be entertaining in those discussions. The city attorney would advise us not to be capricious in applying any kind of policy in future. So we need to figure out just how rough and tumble we want to get with the concept of parking license. We just can't apply the standard arbitrarily. And we need to figure it out before renewals and transfers come up.
I see.
So we're going to work on that. And there's also going to be, probably going to be some legislation that comes out of the Wyoming Legislature, because I know that there are liquor dealers that are also concerned and have been urging their legislators to deal with this.
Yeah. Kind of all ties into the parked licenses and the license with the one-year extension or one-year restriction. All of it ties in for me, anyway. Next item on the agenda was the Mike Cedar parking lot. It seemed real strange to me that we just spent $4 million to build that pool and that a parking lot wasn't a part of it at that time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Take that one. Councilman Healy?
Parking lot was a part of the plan and the budget. It just hadn't gotten done yet.
It wasn't part of the $4 million?
It was part of the budget for the one-size allocation for the Mike Cedar pool. It just hadn't gotten done prior to the opening of the pool. So now it's being done subsequent to the seasonal closing of the pool.
So it's not $4,275,000. It's $3,700,000 with adding this 275 in there.
If my recollection was right, I think the total with the parking lot was going to be close to $5 million.
So it is part of the initial cost of it?
It was.
Okay. Item number seven and eight, change order, change order. And then amendment number one. It seems like every time I come, we have a change order. And they all cost money. And we're supposed to be keeping track of the money. Why do we have so many change orders?
I actually took notes on some of this. And the change order for the lights is just a 76-day extension. It's for the concourse lighting. It does not involve any money. What was the other change order?
GW Mechanical?
Free Stats.
Okay. Can't find any notes on that, but...
It's in the text.
Right. And you could download a packet and read the memos at the beginning and they would tell you most of this stuff.
I see. Some of the city people that I've dealt with know I'm computer illiterate. I can't turn it on. So I don't have that privilege. But anyways, it's just a concern of mine that we spend the money, which is tight.
Yes.
And then we come back with change orders that I know a lot of times, change orders just happen, but you can't have one every council meeting.
Your Honor?
Yes.
There's always a contingent budgeted into those projects for that specific reason, for potential change orders and issues down the line. So it's not like, you know, it's going over budget. It's part of, it's a contingent always allotted for that.
I see.
Right. And I did ask about that. And these change orders are within their contingency fund? And so, you know, it's not costing us any money at this time.
I see. Well, to the layman that doesn't know that, it all looks like money going out the budget. So, thank you.
I understand. And, you know, in all fairness, I think one of these contingencies funds is like down to 3,000 bucks, so they don't have much more room.
Yeah. You're way over that with the two or three tonight, so...
The one that I remember right offhand on the chiller up at the event center, that was an oversight in the plans and getting the new equipment that was going in to made up with some of the old equipment. And so basically, you either don't have any coolers or you need to go ahead and put it all together. So that had been a planned oversight that was needed to be corrected. So that's what that change order was for. And yeah, we are trying to watch dollars. There's no doubt about that.
Yeah, I'm sure of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, Tracy Lamont.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, folks. Real quick, I was happy to see all the results in the election. Guys, it's pretty spirited races, so best of luck to you guys in the final. The... I've been a little remiss getting here. My father's been kind of day by day here all summer long, and I've been helping my brother look out for him. So I've had to put family first here. But I did get a chance to sneak off. He's in Denver to a doctor's appointment with my brother this evening. So left yesterday, be back tomorrow. The... I'd want to give you a quick mountain report here, being a good neighbor, because you guys, I continually maintain our excellent neighbors. Also, it comes from the commissioner's office or meeting that was rather spirited this evening. Obviously, there was a real shocker announced. Dick O'Hern is no longer with the Parks Department, County Parks Department, as of August 25th. It kept that pretty quiet. And Greg Feininger with the Tribune and Dale Boran finally wrote a report on that yesterday. Maybe you saw that. But you need to pay real close attention to that. I'm hearing from sources that there's an external extensive investigation going on in some of the handling of the buyout of the lawn range and the monies thereof with the Daniels Foundation and the Olympic Committee that was funded by, I've got it here somewhere, $70-some million, I think. I might be wrong on that, for grants from the U.S. Veterans Affairs, so...
Point of order. We're trying to have a meeting. If you guys want to have another meeting, would you mind?
So...
And while we got interrupted, I would just like to know, be careful about making allegations?
Okay. And I will continue then. I'll pass through here through Mr. McDonnell, a pitcher. And I'm not making allegations to this group at all. You know, hopefully, I have a fairly exemplary relationship with you folks. I'd just like to keep you informed. I... The reason I passed that slash is still laying at the center. And I believe quite a bit of that came off the city's 200 acres. I've also, I haven't had a chance to tour, but I would welcome the opportunity here sometime mid-month, if any of you'd like to walk the trails of your 200 acres that you have leased to the county, I'd be more than glad to take on a personal trip. I think we can probably get permission to go through there on ATVs, a one-shot deal. People are in and out of there all the time right now. But, you know, the natives are restless up there because of the fire danger and it just keeps getting pooh-poohed. And, you know, we're not expecting the county to haul that out of there. We're not expecting the city to carry it out of there. We feel like the contractor needs to complete his contract. I couldn't get a straight answer whether he's been paid off 100% by, you know, the matching funds that you guys have provided, the county's provided, and the state has provided. But I'm here to plead with you one more time and will continually to give those folks no more money until phase one is done to the expectations and to the letter of the law and to the specifications stated on Ingrid Miller's contract. And, you know, they put seed mats down. And there's no topsoil in them. I haven't seen a green blade of grass come up through there, but I haven't been over there, looking real close. I can tell you that it's a swamp right now with all the recent rain we have because it doesn't drain. The other thing I made a suggestion to the county at the meeting before last was to start moving some of the topsoil that had been stored for years from their service building project and stored on Tower Hill. And they're moving that over there. I was hoping they'd take care of it. You can see from that picture, that cliff, you know, that was supposed to be sloped and be seeded. And it's your rock. They need to finish blasting it and take care of it. A lot of negative feedback coming relative to that. But last but not least, I'll read to you here, this is some of the deception that goes on, but it says, "Water permit use has been suspended due to the low water level in well and tank." They have two tanks. The Fire Department has paid for those, the Mountain Fire Department, well, they pay for the pumping and the heating cost on it, I believe. But levels in the well and tank, once level has recovered, permit usage will once again be permitted. While it finally leaked out via a very reliable source, the EPA paid them a surprise annual or, you know, or every five-year annual visit, whatever the verbiage should be. And they hadn't addressed the issues that they were told to address in the last inspection. And there's an independent water certified tester up there that you guys know quite well, go unnamed, but he pulled levels out at the start of the season, they were almost toxic. They were chlorinated too high. They were borderline toxic. So they couldn't use the system. Now, they should claim that it's not even drinkable, but it's still turned on to the parks as near as I've been able to confirm. But the bottom line is the EPA did not know they were selling water permits to households on the mountain or residents or cabin owners. And the permit is strictly for park use only in the parks. So that brings up a real vested concern that you guys, I've talked to you, I've briefed you on before. And, you know, being good neighbors, you guys hold a heck of a resource there with the water that's available at Hogadon and it's quality water. And I know the cost of water and water business is a tentative subject with everyone, but I see an opportunity there for you to be a good neighbor even further than you have been. And consider putting in a card reading water stanchion year-round like they have at the town of Evansville. If it can be done at Hogadon, then an ideal place would be to run a line from the tank or at the last water line, almost at the city limits, and people could source water at the bottom. The more people have water and tanks up there, and they all work with the fire district to provide water in case of a fire. So we're all in this together for fire protection. I can't drill that in everybody's head enough. Bob knows it. I've been diehard on that since I've been introduced to the mountain practically. So I'd like you to kick that around in work sessions that you have. Your guys' purse strings are usually a little bit better than the others and you know how to manage it. You guys have professionals on it. And last but not least, I'm hearing nothing but positive about Hogadon from folks up there. I drove by when you were removing dirt. I've seen photos posted on our Casper Mountain landowners, I see some of the iron going up. Without a doubt, that's going to be a rallying point up there. And I think you can gauge a lot more support of that from the community long-term. And, you know, we've talked about the tentacles that can flow off of that long-term. And I know you're all 100% behind that. So I'll get shot from some people for my support of Hogadon, and I don't even downhill ski, but it's a good deal.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Mr. Lamont? Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council? Please approach the lectern.
Michael Allen, 2760 Robertson Road. Want to thank you guys for your time. I'm going to keep this brief. I have a girl softball team. We travel throughout the state of Wyoming. We are a private organization. And our concern is that we're going to lose softball here in Casper, other than the recreation leagues. Reason I say that, we played fall ball last year, and there were several tournaments throughout Wyoming. This year, the tournaments are slim and none. Okay? So what I'm looking at is Gillette, they go the South Dakota Circuit because it's all high school in the fall because we don't have it in the schools. Rock Springs is going the Utah route. Cheyenne, another big player, they're going Northern Colorado. So we're losing all of our softball teams to other states. Okay? Casper being the biggest, I'm the only traveling softball team in the fall in Casper. Okay? We're a brand-new organization. We are the Casper Cobras. Right now, we are practicing in Glen Rock because we don't have fields for our girls. Okay? It is like, it's a very touchy subject, I know, but we have fields at 13th and Sycamore that we would love to have. Okay? I can't force other people to coach teams. But what I can tell you is that I can start more teams. Okay? Our plan, this is our first year. And I mean, I don't want to sound rude by any means, because anything that I can get from the city of Casper would be amazing. But I would like to add another team. I would like to have two Casper Cobra teams so that we can compete. Gillette has two high school teams. Rock Springs has three high school teams. Cheyenne has four. Cheyenne won't even show up to any of our tournaments. Okay? So that's kind of a sad thing for us. I don't want to lose softball in Wyoming altogether. But it seems like in Casper, we have let it dwindle down to almost nothing, where girls are not even sure that there are teams out there. I'm going to hit the news. I've hit K-2. Channel 13's coming up Thursday. I mean, I'm one of those, I'm the greasy wheel. You know what I mean? It's a squeaky wheel gets the grease. So, I mean, and I just keep going because I'm very passionate about, I mean, I'm a father with two girls. They can't play boys' baseball. They're not allowed to. What are they supposed to do? You know, I have one that plays volleyball. The other one, all she wants to do is play softball. So our season goes from February, when I have tryouts, to November 1st. So we have a very long season. We go all summer and then we go all fall. And, you know, we just want a place to play. As far as the 13th and Sycamore fields, I know I've heard different things through different grapevines, you know, that, oh, the city's going to tear them down. And for us, we would like to utilize those fields. I mean, if that is anything even remotely possible, that's something that I would like to see happen. Not for games, because there's not ample parking. But if I can get two teams going, I can have two practices at the same time. What had happened, we had permission to go use those fields during the summer. We showed up and Casper Youth Baseball's on the fields. And so I asked them, you know, politely, how long their practice was, and the coach there said, "It's first come, first served, bud." You know? And I've got girls that come from Douglas, Glen Rock, Casper. We're all meeting here, and I had permission to use the fields, but when I get there, they're used by boys' baseball. There are 19 fields in the city. That's a lot. And a lot of them are used by Casper Youth Baseball. The others are used by adult softball. So I just, I want a place that my girls can call home where we can practice and maybe have games in the fall. I am hosting a tournament next week in Heron, Casper, just so you know. And we have Rock Springs and Gillette are coming. So, I mean, I want to thank you for your time, but I want to get that out there and maybe see if, I know that there's something in October. I was told that... that we're going to make some kind of decision about 13th Street Fields, so I would love to know more about that.
Okay. First off, what are those online resources? You can go to the City Casper website, go on their GIS, find out if we do indeed own it, I think I was talking to you on the phone, and we weren't quite sure about that, so you can establish ownership, yes, the city owns that property. I also talked with the city attorney, and he said that it's never been maintained as a park, so that worry that we had over the phone, that it could be locked up in its designation forever, that's not a problem. The discussion in October will be what the city would like to entertain as far as divesting of its real properties, and certainly this does need to be a part of that discussion.
Okay, and my last comment was that I had sent an email out, and I don't know if it went to the city manager, or, I don't know, but it was supposed to be hand-delivered to somebody, and basically it was a proposal of what I wanted to use the field for.
Right.
And, you know, basically, I mean, I was saying we would take all utilities, we would take on the responsibility of the upkeep, the maintaining of the fields, the grounds, the buildings, everything, you know, so that the city didn't have that as a burden, and, I mean, again, we are a small nonprofit organization, we do, I mean, I try and keep all my funding, you know, for the kids, I don't want their parents to be broke, you know, I don't want them to pay, you know, Casper Youth Baseball prices, but keep it affordable.
Yep.
You know, so.
And you have interjected the idea into the discussion.
Very good.
That's about as much reassurance as I can give you at this point, because the other scary scenario that I recall from our phone conversation was that city offers it up for sale, fat cat comes along and buys it, and then it's out of your hands, and you can't afford to buy it, so, you know, I understand that that's part of the discussion. Any questions? Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Your Honor. Where are you holding the tournament this weekend?
The tournament this coming weekend is in Gillette, and the following weekend is here at Casper, and I don't have the fields yet, it's through the Parks and Rec, so they're going to assign fields to us, I guess, and it may be at Crossroads.
And I assume you've tried to work with our folks as far as your scheduling, and been told that the fields are already reserved, or?
Not for this kind of.
Tell us what the problem is with not being, having access to the North Casper Fields or the Crossroads Fields, if you would, sir.
Right, and that's what had happened last year. This year, I wasn't even aware that we were going to host a tournament, and it was another team that had told Gillette that they were going to have a tournament here, well, they dropped out, they don't even have a team, so, and so when I found that out from Gillette, that Rock Springs, Gillette, Cheyenne, everybody was coming to Casper next weekend for a tournament, I told the guy in Gillette that I, not to disappoint them, we would make it happen one way or another, whether it be here or whether it be in Douglas, because I do have contacts in Douglas as well, I have players from there. So I contacted the Parks and Rec, and they said that they would be able to accommodate us for that.
But I assume you've asked the same question as far as, because you have to have time, field time to practice and play other games, et cetera, so we've been unable to accommodate you with our existing fields, is that?
That's, yes. It has been, it has been quite a nightmare, and I'll just leave it at that, but, I mean, we have been told no, we cannot practice on a Casper Youth Baseball field, we cannot practice on adult softball fields, they have games, they have this, they have that, or they have midget football going on, or, you know, something is going on on a field, and then to just be told no, over and over, so that's why we practice in Glen Rock, because they allow us fields there anytime we want, and we are not from Glen Rock, so, I mean, that's, to me, is the frustration, I guess.
Understood.
I mean, it does get frustrating.
Your Honor, just follow up.
Certainly.
Just coincidentally, the Leisure Board is having its first meeting day after tomorrow at the event center, and takes public comment, and so I think that would be a good time for us to maybe discuss, you know, the use of our existing resources, because obviously we want these kids playing.
Right.
Any more questions for Michael Allen?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes.
I'm new to this, so sorry. Amy Kidd, 455 Milton Avenue. I came for the water bill situation, I assumed more people were going to be here, but they weren't, but there was another issue I wanted to bring up to you, I'm not sure of where, where to go or what to do with it.
Okay.
I'm going to get emotional, so. In January this year, I was raped, and I'm pregnant, and I am working with an investigator through the city of Casper, and she's been wonderful. However, it takes weeks sometimes to get a phone call returned, to get updates on my case, and in March is when I reported the rape, and I didn't hear from her until April, May, and that's a long time to wait, especially when you're pregnant, and I've got five other children at home. Anyway, it just takes a long time to get any kind of response, and I did speak with Mike Ogden, and he said they were very shorthanded, and, you know, they're in classes all the time, and they're busy, and my detective especially is busy with, she deals with children, so of course those take priority, I would hope, but they're just shorthanded. In the time that I, my, the person that did this to me, and all the time that, from when I reported till now, she never made contact with him and brought him in to be investigated or even questioned because she was too busy. If our investigators are too busy to handle a rape case, it's very, very frustrating. Secondly, in that time, he was arrested again for domestic battery, and one of the main reasons I reported the rape was that he didn't hurt anyone else, and I'm just, I'm at my wits end, and I'm hoping that there's money in a budget if the investigators are all too busy to deal with this properly, that it doesn't continue to happen to other women because they're too busy with drugs or DUIs or kids or whatever, whatever the petty stuff is, this is, I mean, this is life-changing, and it's just kind of being dealt like a, with like a stolen bike, and it's just frustrating, so I would hope that you would look at being able to hire more investigators to help people in similar situations like myself, and so that the people that do these things aren't able to continue to commit more crimes against other women.
I would like to express my regret for what you've been through, and you did the right thing, you reported it, you tried to get some justice, and that's not often the case.
I missed?
And I'm sorry that you've encountered frustrations through the legal system, and I, I'm not going to make any excuses for them, I'm just sorry for your experience.
It just, I want it to be brought to your attention, when this happened to me, I thought it could never happen to me, you know, you see this on CSI and Dateline, and you don't think it's ever going to happen to you, but it did, and I just don't want it to continue to happen because the police don't have the staff that they need to deal with it properly. I mean, I'm calling an investigator two times a day for a week straight, and I'm not getting, sorry, I'm in meetings this week, I can't get back to you, even just as much as a return phone call, it's just a slap in the face, so.
Understood.
Have you, were you, did you go any further with that? Did you try to contact supervisors or the chief of police or lodge any complaints?
I spoke with Mike Ogden, who's her supervisor. I wasn't permitted to speak with the chief of police because they said I needed to follow the chain of command, but I did that, I went in and met with him, he, of course, is hunting this week and next, so he's out of the office, and it's just, and my investigator was, like I said, in classes all week last week, so there's pretty much no one to call when developments happen or you have any piece of evidence, or.
Okay. Please tell me you have legal counsel?
I was hoping the DA was going to take the case, and it hasn't even made it up to his desk yet.
Okay, well, it's.
I do have legal counsel privately, but legal counsel, but, I mean.
Okay, I know, and you've been careful not to mention any names, and that's good, because you don't need to complicate this anymore from your end, I understand that, and we're all kind of in that same position where we really, we're stuck, can't really discuss it, so the particulars of your case, I'm sorry you're frustrated by this.
And I'm not interested in discussing those, but I am interested in just making sure that you're aware that there is a huge problem here, and this is happening in our town, and, you know, people are being able to commit crimes like this and then go out and commit more crime because they're not even, there's no time to even investigate or question them, and I don't feel like there's an excuse for that.
Just want to make sure I understood what you just said, someone told you you weren't permitted to speak with the chief?
Said that there was a chain of command I needed to follow, and I needed to speak to her supervisor first, before I spoke with the chief of police.
Okay. Which you attempted to do.
Mm-hmm.
Appreciate you coming forward.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thanks. Anyone else care to address council? Next meeting of the city council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, September 13th, 2016, in the council's meeting room, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM Tuesday, September 20th, in the council chambers. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Please cast your vote, and please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
We're adjourned.